Very good, and we have a quorum.
Acting Mayor DePaul, we are live streaming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Okay, members of committee, I'm going to call this Budget Committee meeting to order. And I'll have to read the public notice at least one more time here as we slowly and safely move towards reopening. But due to the efforts to contain the spread of COVID-19 and to protect all individuals, city facilities will not be open to the public to attend council and committee meetings until further notice. The public can observe meetings of council and committees by viewing the live stream of the open session part of these meetings, which can be accessed on the city's website or on the city's YouTube page, which is linked from the city's homepage. Okay, members of committee, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Just need a mover. Thank you, Councilor Liu. Any discussion? All in favor? May I ask her it here? That carries. Thank you. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? If so, please state the general nature. Okay, I see none. I don't believe we have any delegations. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clerk. We can move into scheduled business? Okay, so our first item is item 4.1. It's a discussion surrounding the year and operating results as of December 31st, 2020. And we have a presentation from our Treasurer and Director of Financial Services, David Dexter. Go ahead, Mr. Dexter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Good afternoon, members of council. This agenda is a full agenda. We have five reports, and really, the five reports touch on three different years. We have three that relate to the 2020 year-end results. And then we have a Q2 update forecast for 2021. And of course, the tariff fee update, which will largely impact 2022. Before I dive into my first presentation, I would like to thank all finance staff under Gigi Lee's leadership for all their hard work in getting these reports and all the hard work behind the reports and presentations to get to this agenda. So I want to say grateful thanks to them all. Okay, next slide. So the first report here, we're going to go through the operating results for 2020. And this slide really gives a one-page summary. The operating fund had a deficit of about $1,553,000. And that's where all our COVID impacts played out. And that deficit includes the COVID impacts as well as business as usual. Water wastewater fund had a surplus of 1.2. And our stormwater fund also had a small surplus as well. And I got slides to talk about all those. Next, please. So 2020 was a year like no other. It was with the pandemic, COVID-19 pandemic. There was society significantly altered. The community found new ways to consume services and goods. And the city operated in a very different way. We found different ways to reduce our travel. We had restricted social gatherings. There was limited recreation programming. Most people were at home most of the time, but increased costs for health and safety protocols. And use of technology increased as the workforce had to be mobilized into working remotely from their home. So quite a changing year in society and in Richmond Hill. A lot of financial pressures municipalities faced, and the federal and provincial government were there to provide a lot of assistance to municipalities. And I have another slide later on on this. But we received $4.1 million safe restart funding in 2020 and a further 7.3 in 2021 to help there. And of course, we have to do some obligatory reporting back in June on the use of these funds in 20 and planned use in 2021. Next slide, please. So I'll focus first on the operating fund. We had, as I mentioned, a deficit of $1,553. And there are no net impacting carryforwards. All the carryforwards are fully funded. And this would be to fund this deficit, we would tap on the safe restart funds that are provided by the, as I mentioned on the previous slide. And I got more details on this deficit here. To the next slide, please. So we've broken out this presentation and the staff report on a business as usual impacts. And that's like the first numeric column. And then, of course, the COVID-related impacts in the middle column. And as you can see, the business as usual, we had a surplus of about $2.5 million. And a lot of that was the mitigating measures that council approved through the year to get to deal with the COVID financial impact. Because for most of the year, we weren't, we were of the knowledge that the federal and provincial government were going to provide assistance. That first round of assistance came in the early fall. So we put in, most significantly, hiring freeze. And you'll see that under the personal gapping. We had significant savings in excess of budget of $3.3 million. And then there was a number, number of other positive contributors, $1.9 million, and negative contributors, $2.5. To get to that $2.5 million, I got slides on those two, last two items. And then looking at COVID, the impact of COVID-19 impacted us for about almost $4.1 million. And that largely played out in the recreation area through lost revenues. We did find savings on the cost, but certainly they couldn't substantiate enough cost savings to to deal with the lost revenue in the area. So the combination of that deficit amount there and the business as usual surplus comes to that deficit of $1.553 million. And the last column really compares to, in January at the BCW meeting, we indicated that we expected a deficit of about $1.5 million. And of course, it came in very close to that. Next slide, please. Okay, to the positive contributors. So I'll focus on the business as usual first, and then I'll go over to the COVID-related. Under the business as usual, we, under refuse and recycling, we had lower volumes collected. So there were savings against our waste collection contract of about $700,000. We still collected payments in lieu of taxation for the York Region Transit Facility on Orlando Street. The region still has not received after about, I believe, three years exemption from the ministry. So we continued to collect those monies to our favor of $600,000. Development and planning revenues exceeded by almost $400,000. And that was largely from an influx of official plan and zoning bylaw amendment applications. And mid-year, we put in place Lake Wilcox parking cost, sorry, revenue program. And that provided $220,000 additional revenue. So business as usual, positive contributors were about $1.9 million. Let's try to go to the middle column under the COVID-related. By not having any program, or very few programs, and our facility closed for most of the year, there's these significant cost savings there. And as you see there, the middle column is $13.4 million worth of savings from program-related, not having the casual staffing and material costs. And of course, facilities being closed provides significant savings on the utility front and some of the occupancy-related contracts that we have. So in total, there, a total favorable contributors was about $15 million. Next slide, please. The negative contributors toward the results, I'll start, I'll go down the COVID column because that's where the majority of the activity is first. The biggest item is the lost revenues that we had not be able to, due to the pandemic, not be able to provide programs. Our facilities closed. That was the big impact of $14 million with the lost revenues there. Tax penalties and interest, that's late payments of taxation. Typically, we have a budget of about $3.5 million, and that usually comes in around there or a little bit more. We, early in the year, we made, early in the pandemic, about, I think it was late March, early April, we decided that council approved that we would provide financial relief to those hardest hit by the pandemic by not charging late payment fees for their taxes. So that impact was about $2.4 million, providing that. And we've experienced through the year through a lot of push by staff, social media, and council members that, bear with me, I'm in a room here with no lights. There, sorry. So there was lost revenue, about $2.4 million there. Investment income, I got my next presentation really is about the portfolio results. But lower short-term interest rates, as the bank Canada, pretty soon after the pandemic hit, reduced the overnight rates by one and a half basis points. And that really impacted our investment income there in an already low interest environment. So that was about $1 million lost there. There was a lot of one-time COVID expenses I would never anticipated. You know, the cost, the technology cost to have staff work remotely from home had an impact. PPEs, extra cleaning supplies, signage for our buildings. And that was, that all added up to additional one-time costs of about $700,000. We also had an impact under parking fine revenues collected. There was a, we suspended the collection and fining of certain type of parking activities. Parking infractions had, that had an impact on our revenues as well as we recognized financial hardship when people brought their parking fines for remediation. So there was greater reductions recognizing that. So we had an impact there of about $555,000 less revenues. Overdue tax water collection revenues, this is kind of in addition to the second item there, the tax penalties and arrears. We also, council also approved that any late payments of water bills would not be penalized. Typically, when a water bill goes up to 60 days overdue, we transfer it to the tax account and we charge an administrative fee for that. We didn't charge that, and we didn't, we didn't transfer things over to the tax account because council provided leniency for 2020. Supplementary taxes were below budget. It's usually typically about a $1.4 million budget. We were about $300,000 less. M-PAC, who typically processes our supplementary tax activities, weren't able to access facilities to be able to add it to the tax roll, in your tax roll. So that had an impact of about $300,000. And on the business as usual side, the one thing there, you know, more significant weather impacts, winter in January, February of 2020 resulted in greater costs. And that was also compounded on higher material costs and less revenues collected from subdivision maintenance agreements. So the negative impacters were about almost $20 million here. Next slide. So council and staff did a very good job of responding to the pandemic. We put in place financial relief for residents who struggled most from the pandemic. We put, we put in cost mitigating measures to mitigate the deficit that we, from the lost revenues from COVID-19. But that wasn't enough. And that was enough for all municipalities. They needed further help as well. So the federal government and the provincial government stepped up, and they provide significant funding through three rounds, which I briefly explained earlier. This provides a bit of a reconciliation of how the monies are looking. So in 2020, early fall, we received about $4.1 million. And then, so this deficit, which I've described to you in this presentation, would be funded from that monies. So we would still have about $2.6 million of that pocket of money going forward into 2021. As I mentioned earlier, we also received additional two rounds of money of $1.7 million and $5.6 million. Down on top of the $2.6 million remaining, carryforward leaves a fairly significant amount. So we project, and Gigi's going to give a presentation later in this agenda about the forecast for 2021, we anticipate about a $5.8 million deficit for '21. So using the safe restart monies that we have accumulated there, we would still have $4.1 million to go into 2022 to deal with the residual and hangover impact of the pandemic in 2022. Next slide, please. On the water wastewater side, the results were favorable. We had a surplus of $1.7 million. And when we net away the carryforward request for infrastructure rehabilitation work that didn't get done, that we were dealing with in 2021, we have a net surplus of about $1.2 million. And we would typically split that between the water rate stabilization reserve and the water quality protection reserve fund. Next slide, please. This slide really breaks it down by the major components. And my following slide after this, I'll explain some of the details of it. But really, the majority of the budgets in the first three lines there, where the revenues we collect are offset against the cost that we pay the region. Typically, the region's costs are a little over 70% of this total budget, so it really drives this budget. We have, we had, the surplus really was predicated on 4.1% greater usage of water because everybody's at home and using more, more water. And so the impact is there. We flatlined, we did pass on the budget-approved rate increase that was supposed to be at 7.5%. Instead, we flatlined it at the 2019 rates. But the greater consumption more than exceeded the, the loss on the, not passing on the rate increase. Next slide, please. So that's really the first two points that really explains the fact that we, the surplus from the greater volume usage really outweighed the, the flatlining of the rate. But we also experienced some other assistance there, as I mentioned, maintenance and admin operations. Had savings on the casual wages, training, and some infrastructure repairs and maintenance due to the restrictions of the pandemic. So they, they couldn't go through with a lot of the, a lot of the required works that had to be done and the use of casual staff there. And that really predicates the carryforward for some of this rehabilitation work to be, to deal with in 2021. On the Revenue Services side, the, there were savings from water reading and testing costs. The majority of the population now are on the new radio frequency water meters. So there's not the old costs that we experienced of walking, an individual walking to each house and taking readings. It's done by drive-by. So it's greater cost savings there from now and going into the future. Also, and there is additional revenues that we experienced on the ownership change in water collection side. And these were really a reflection of the very active real estate market and the changing of hands of ownership. And so we provide, we charge an administrative fee for setting up accounts and transferring accounts there. So we saw gains there. And as I mentioned in a previous slide, we had the allocation of it between those two reserves. Next slide. Now, on the stormwater side, we also flatlined the rate. We were supposed to pass on a rate increase of 7.5%, but again, to provide assistance for, to the community through this tough time, we did not pass on that rate increase, so we continued to apply 2019 rates. We had a small surplus, though the flatline of the rates saw less revenues come in than we had budgeted. But we had greater savings on some of the maintenance costs that didn't go forward with relation to the stormwater infrastructure. So it all netted out to about $39,000 worth of surplus, a small surplus there. Next slide, please. So the recommendations on the report is to receive it, to approve the carryforwards that are provided in the appendix, to approve the funding of the operating funds deficit from the safe restart monies that we've received, and then to allocate the surplus of the water, wastewater, and stormwater, as I've identified in this report and the presentation. And I turn it back to you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there someone willing to move those four recommendations before I turn it over to committee for questions? Thank you, Counselor West. I believe we just need a mover. Go ahead, Counselor West, if you have questions or comments.
No, I don't. I'm not sure whether I heard from the treasurer. So it would appear that we will have extra, well, I'm not sure, maybe the right word isn't extra, but we will have surplus money left over from the safe restart funds in the short term. And I assume that there's very significant restrictions on what municipalities can and can't do with those funds. Mr. Dexter, can you just maybe add a little bit more clarity for me as to, and you might have said this, and maybe I misunderstood, but where, where are we going to be using that money if we're not, if we have leftovers after the 2021 cycle? What kind of estimate are we looking at in 2022? Or do we even really know?
Director?
Through, Mr. Acting Mayor. So our early forecasting exercises for 2022 operating budget, we're looking at maybe a $3 to $3.5 million impact, continued impact from COVID-19, be it continued distancing requirements, slow uptake and enrollment as a, as a lot of the public may be very tentative to enroll in our programs. So the province and the federal government recognize that the monies will go on from there and that there will be impacts. We do have to report on it, but we do expect an impact in 2022.
Okay, and I, is it too early for me to be asking for a definitive answer about what, what the net result after 2022 would be with those funds?
Through, Mr. Acting Mayor, maybe a little early, yes.
Okay, all right, all right. I'm happy to move it. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair. And I would echo your thanks, Mr. Dexter, to you and your staff for all the work. It is a monumental task to be putting all the information that's, that's going to be presented today together. And I would like to add my thanks as well.
Hey, thank you, Counselor West, for putting the motion on the floor. I definitely want to thank our treasurer, Mr. Dexter, and his team for all the work that's been done here to this point. And especially in the past 12 months of all the extra work that had to be done. Everything COVID-related had to be segregated and accounted for. That added another layer to an already very, very difficult task. And we, we thank you all for that work that's been done. The next person who wanted to speak is Counselor Chan, I believe. You had your hand up?
Thank you, Acting Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Dexter, and the whole team for the diligent work under very challenging circumstances nobody would have expected it. So it's good to know that as much as Richmond Hill is operating as lean as we can under circumstances, there certainly be federal provincial money help. I gather, I'm not going to ask for a question because in your response to Counselor West, Mr. Dexter already mentioned about maybe premature to surmise or speculate what will happen. But I think that we should also don't lose sight. If we don't have those federal and provincial money, we actually will be really in a situation deficit. So it's, it's good that the senior levels government recognizing the, for the difficulties and challenges of all municipalities are going through. And to that extent, I think that also gratitude to the federal and provincial government in recognizing the difficulties, financial challenges that all municipalities are facing, including Richmond Hill. So I'm happy to second the motion. And thank you, Acting Mayor, for opportunity to speak. And thank you to Team Finance for doing the hard work.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Chan. Counselor Munch?
Good day. Thank you. Good job, and everybody else. I have lots of questions, so as opposed, good stuff. I know it's been a difficult time. A few points is we received $11.4 million from the various levels of government in support of the COVID. Is that correct, total? 4.1, 4.1 in 2020, and then 7.3 in 2021, right?
That's correct.
And so really, for 2020, the 7.3 is for reference, but the 4.1 is for this report, right?
Yeah, if you could match, that's for sure, yes.
Thank you. One thing I had problems with, just off the cuff, is I always see a revenue as a credit and expense as a debit. So I had problems reconciling my brain when you were going positive back. But I understand for the rationale of the report, you had to go that way. So I was trying to reconcile when we talk about positive versus negative, and we're looking at increased revenues and lowers, increased greater revenues and lower expenses as a debit. I had a hard problems with that. But I just want to tell you, that's a language problem of accounting, I guess. And I appreciate the report, and you did balance that out nicely. On January 26th, Budget Committee of a Hall on slide number five, we had a forecast of 3.6 for personal gapping, but we had a total favorable 3.3. The positive contributors of the greater revenues and expenses. Can you just explain that one more time? So the greater revenues and lower expenses, how that all qualifies? Because there's a $5 million variance there, as I see it, from the difference between the January 26th versus where the favorable and unfavorable is.
I guess, through, Mr. Acting Mayor, that slide, should we pop it up so people, members of council could visualize the questions? Okay, so with respect to the gapping, quickly explaining gapping was a result of staff turnover, vacancies, delays in hiring, and so forth. Big vacant positions, so we froze hiring of many positions, if not most positions through 2020 in order to deal with, to mitigate the pressures, the financial pressures of the pandemic. Initially, we anticipated it was going to be about 3.6. Our final numbers came in after we went and completed our year-end work. Came in at 3.3. Again, maybe the same, our final works came in as all the invoices and so forth came in. We, the results were the results. Like, I don't have an explanation for what the difference between the forecast and the actual results, but the fact is that we had, you know, going off our best knowledge during that time period. But since then, we've had two or three months to get all the final paperwork accounting in, and it's resulted in the net same result. But a bit of a variance bottom per line there.
Okay, the question I have then on that is, so where, if we have a surplus in that, where does this surplus go? Does it go onto the operating side? Does it go to reserve? Where does the, on this 220 operating fund year-end deficit, where would a, where would a surplus and where would a deficit go? How do we, how do we account for that? Where does it go? What do we do? What's our procedure, our concept?
Through, Mr. Acting Mayor, in a typical year, non-pandemic, if we had a surplus, which we, many, most years, we do have a bit of a surplus, that gets allocated to the tax rate stabilization reserve. And that's a reserve that we maintain to deal with potential one-offs, unforeseen pressures, economic or maybe even environmental pressures that impact the community and that we want to fund on a one-off basis. So we maintain a reserve, which has about a $6.7 million balance right now. So if we have surplus, that's where the monies would go. If we had a deficit under a typical year, non-COVID year, we would also fund it from the tax rate stabilization reserve. 2020 wasn't a typical year, of course, and so, and we received a, the monies from the upper levels of government, and we're using them in our situation here.
Fair enough, thank you. So the $6.7 million balance that's in that tax stabilization reserve, how often do we get an update on our reserve accounts? When do we, when do we see the totals? Do we get December 31st? I would have liked to see the stabilization reserves like now for the end of 2020. Are we going to see that at some point? Like, when are we going to see these reserve accounts where we are on balancing?
We can report on, out on those in the fall, if you like, the fall BCW.
And do we have, do we have a number there that we're, that's a financial number? I'm wondering if we have a percentage number that we're trying to keep, so we know if that thing goes up or down. What do we do? Is that done at all, or are we simply just putting numbers in the account and it is what it is?
Ideal best practices, according to the, some of the better governing bodies for municipalities, is that your stabilization reserves would be 10% of your gross budget. Our operating budget on the tax rate side is about $184 million. So we would, you know, in an ideal situation, maintain an $18 million balance in the reserve. Probably, I don't believe many municipalities are anywhere near that type of, meeting that type of benchmark of 10%. They do their best, and, you know, things come along that they have to spend.
Fair enough. Just, as we're in the mature end of our life cycle and moving that in our area, it makes our reserves even more critical than it was in past years. So that's something of a focus for me going to be going forward because we need to get there, because our cash is going to be dwindling, and we don't want to go into debt if we can help it. In my view. The COVID on slide number seven, where you've got the COVID-19 expenses. You expressed it with signs, masks, and technology from home. Was that for support staff predominantly?
Through, Acting Mayor, that's probably the majority of it's, you know, actually equipment and stuff to get people working from home. You know, laptops, monitors, and those things where people didn't have those at home and they need to take them home. Those are examples of the type of things. So I think it's more equipment.
Okay, so are we going, so I'll leave that for IT when they come forward. So are we moving people then more to laptops away from desktops? These are people that used to have desktops then, they've gone, they went to laptops? Is that what I'm hearing?
Um, I mean, I can't speak fully on that, but I believe there was movement to, people to, to get laptop replacements at the end of life of their desktops. The majority of our staff that did have desktops made it quite onerous to have. The majority of our staff that did have desktops made it quite onerous to have to take their laptop home or, and the equipment home. And then, of course, bring it back because a lot of finance, I can speak for finance staff. We had to cycle in during, in the office because we still received, you know, paper stuff to deal with it or faxes if we're getting something from legal firms, they still deal with faxes. So there's still a lot of that. So we had to have a cycling basis to come into the office. And then those people are lugging in their desktops and setting up and so forth. It's not a, not a good way to go about setting up and unsettling up and so forth.
Yeah, on side. Supplementary taxes are usually 1.4 million roughly, right?
Yep.
And we, we got 296,000 money there. So what are those supplementary taxes?
So supplementary taxes are in-year additions to the tax rule. IMPACT identifies them. And then we, we receive, we then bill for supplementary taxes and that's part, partial year taxation. So a building or a number of residents come on board in, in a typical year in May or June or something like that. They're added to the assessment rule by IMPACT. They pass that on to us. We bill for that. So these are additional taxes for portions of the year. We typically, we budget about 1.4 million. That's what we find to kind of be an annual average over recent years. And so sometimes we go over, sometimes we go under, right? So we, we, I guess, achieved around about 1.1 million of that 1.4 million in 2020 because IMPACT couldn't access buildings to be able to add them to the rule in many cases. So, you know, could have been a whole lot worse. I'm, we were quite pleased that it was only about 300,000 less than budget.
Are we going to be able to get that back in arrears going forward?
Oh, yes. Yes, there'll be catch-up, right? We, we fully expect when we develop the 2021 budget, we, we put in for a 1.5% assessment growth, which is a standard number we use over recent years. Fully realizing that the, a part of the, that may pretty well be lower and it actually is, does come in lower around, around closer to the 1% level. And that supplementary taxes will exceed the budget in 2021 as restrictions are lowered and IMPACT is able to access buildings. They'll catch up and those catch-ups will see additional revenues coming in through the year. Tough, we haven't gotten, we haven't got the first run yet. We do get, it should be pretty soon, if not very early July, and we'll get an early sense of how the catch-up's starting up. But I think the fall and the early winter will see quite a bit of activity in the supplementary tax side.
Thank you. Next question on that same slide, slide number seven, I'm having a balancing question. We had a COVID-related total of 19,496,800. Right? My earlier question was the federal and provincial funding was 4.1 plus 7.3 totaling 11.4, of which 4.1 was for 2020. So where, where do we, where did this, where does this 19,496? That goes into another question. One of the councillors asking about how we're going to reconcile the funds with excess going forward. Is that, is that that, that number, how it's going to correlate to our numbers with the provincial and federal government for COVID-related costs? Again, so slide side, slide seven, 19,496,800. And then I see a 4.1 million net provincial funding, which gives me a shortfall of $15 million. So I'm having a math problem.
Sure. And then I can explain that. So we did a lot of, on a pure activity basis, we put in a lot of mitigating measures through the 2020 to help keep the deficit at 1.5 million. Use of the safe restart funds, they've created guidelines in the reporting documents that we have to prepare for the end of this month that they know, they want to understand the mitigating measures as well. So they're not going to let you purely say that the funds were used identifying just the COVID impacts, but they also want to understand what mitigating measures you put in place. Not that they're going to take monies away, but they want to understand due diligence, all your activities, all your operating activities during 2020 and 2021.
Okay, I got that. On, just want to mention on slide eight, I like that you did the 221, round one, round two, you isolated it out and then you gave us a total of 7, 3, 2, 8, 90. When I do the math, I appreciate that. I like, because I balanced bang on there with you there. So I want to tell you, I appreciate that. On the water and wastewater, going on to the surplus with regards to the wastewater. So we had the 7.5%, which we pushed back, but we said we had an increase in actual consumption. So I thought that whatever our costs were, so if we use 100,000 or, you know, use the number if they want to, but I thought that we were making a zero gain. If we, if we purchase so much, we're actually paying at whatever the region charges. So if we have a higher consumption, wouldn't our costs be higher from the region too? Because we're doing it a zero-sum game and wouldn't we have lost by that seven and a half percent because we were effectively subsidizing the region? So I, I lost, I lost that understanding.
Sure. And I'll explain that again through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. So council paused and deferred any rate increase, retail rate increase. So we were still charging the 2019 rates. The region also paused on their rate increases to us as well, right? So that's, that may be the missing link that maybe help you understand that. And of course, the impact of both those together, there would have been a financial impact if the consumption level was as we budgeted, but consumption level was 4% greater, 4.1% greater and that far exceeded the impact of flatlining rates at 19 level.
Actually, so that was a very good favorable number then, actually. So our costs actually lower and our, our, our outlays going bad. So actually was a very, very positive contribution. And that goes back and the surplus goes where again? Sorry?
There's two reserves that we allocated because the, half the charge is for water and the other half of the charge is for sanitary sewer. So we put half into the water rate stabilization reserve and then we entered the other half into the Water Quality Protection Reserve Fund.
On a 50/50 basis?
Yes, on a 50/50 basis.
That's all the questions I had. I see in my notes. Thank you so much. Also, good job with everybody. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Councilor Munch. Just in time there. Didn't see anyone else wanting to win with the comments or questions. So I just again want to really thank our staff here and I want to thank committee members. The decisions we made surrounding 2020, you know, that, that year is behind us now. We, that was a year where we had half a percentage increase into the tax rate and a very, very low tax increase and managed, managed very effectively. And if you remove and take out all the COVID-related issues, a very, very well-run and responsibly managed budget. And if we, if we do consider the COVID impact, it was about $5 million impact to us in 2020. And 4 million of that, nearly 4 million was a result of council's decision to, to give a break to our residents and homeowners on, on taxes and penalties. You know, and so that really in spite of COVID, we managed to deliver all those services that we were able to, that, you know, from conforming with provincial guidelines. Well, we're just, just spending a million dollars more than we otherwise would. So I have a motion on the floor from Councilor West. There's four items there to receive the report, to approve the carry-forward items in appendix B, to fund the deficit of 1.5 odd million from the state free start agreement and that the surplus allocations from water and wastewater be allocated as in appendix C. So all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Thank you, committee. Okay, we moved item 4.2, which is a breakdown of our 2020 investment portfolio results. Another good news story and I'll turn it over to David Dexter to tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. This is our second year-end related report. And that we bring forward in accordance with our obligations in our investment policy. Next slide, please. So Richmond Hill has been guided by an investment policy for many, many years. I've been here with municipality for 24 years and there's always been an investment policy in place since all those years. And it's a core objectives in the investment policy. It's compliance to statutory requirements and that would be the municipal act requirements. Want to preserve the security of capital, maintenance of necessary liquidity and necessarily able to meet all operating cost and capital cost obligations. And then, of course, realizing a competitive rate of return to provide income for our operating budget and for our reserve fund balances. Next slide, please. So 20, I'll start with the same statement I made at the start of last presentation, 2020 was like no other year. And so this slide, this, this graph you see here is really a fair indication of how the economy dropped right away in March. In fact, right away when the pandemic was announced, there were shutdowns, restrictions, and that all led to a 38% contraction in the economy in the second quarter of 2020. In response to that, the Bank of Canada reduced their overnight rate by 150 basis points, moving it all the way down to 0.25%. This was very helpful, along with the, the stimulus packages and funding that the province and federal government, specifically the federal government provided, specifically the SERB, emergency wage subsidy. Those are the two largest ones. Those helped get money into people's hands where it needed to be. And that helped let the economy recover a lot of its contraction. So that by the end of the year, the contraction of the economy was only about 5.4%. So it was a very quick recession and the recovery has been quite good coming out of it. So probably the fastest recession on record. As I mentioned that, however, our investing activities in this low interest rate environment, you know, were very challenging. Next slide. And this, this shows you here the results of our portfolio in 2020 compared to 2019. And so the middle column actually, it says income, investment income in millions of dollars. We attained $13.7 million in investment income and that compares to 2019 where it was 15.9 million. And it's really attributed to the short-term monies, less short-term monies. As I mentioned on the previous slide, the sharp drop in the interest rate from 1.75% to 0.25% really impact our short-term holdings. And as you can see, the difference between those two numbers between 19 and 20, it was $2 million difference. Combine that, we had to keep a large amount in short-term monies because we didn't know how the community was going to react to the waiving a penalty's interest on, for late payments of taxes. So we had to be liquid ready in case many, many residents took advantage of that. And we needed to have funds ready to, in order to pay the cost to provide services. As opposed to the return, the second last column really identifies the actual income realized that hit, that we saw funds come home to our bank. They're at 2.56%. You can see that, again, the short-term returns were very low compared to the previous year. And the third column, which really is the most indicative column and, and performance number, it really reflects not only the realized investment income that you see in the previous column, but also the value of all our holding investments based on market valuation. And the results were very strong, 5.76 as were, as were our long-term fixed security holdings. Really had a, had a strong favorable result at the end of the year. And we took advantage of the equity market drop and allotted and took advantage of our full 5% portfolio allowance in our policy in our, in the one-fund equity portfolio holdings. And that's the only equity portfolio allowed municipalities are allowed to invest in through the one fund. Took advantage of that and that paid off well in evaluation of our portfolio. So we had some very favorable results there at 5.76%. The $13.7 million gets distributed in two ways. First to the operating budget where we allocated $4 million. And though it was more, it was greater than the, the pure short-term rate, short-term income rate. We did only allocate 4 million there and then we allocate the remaining $9.7 million to the reserve funds. Next slide, please. We like to compare ourselves to other municipalities just as a general reference. It's never, it's, in many ways can be apples and oranges because we don't know the investment objectives in their policies or their requirements, capital requirements and timing of cash flows to put investments out with respect to their municipalities. But it's still a decent comparison. And as I mentioned, we compared very fairly at the last column with our 5.76%. We have a benchmark that we use that really takes into account our weighting of our portfolio and that's the FTSE, which stands for Financial Times Stock Exchange, the Canada Debt Market Index and also collaboration with the S and P TSX Composite Index. So we've showed very favorably in those situations. Next slide, please. This, this slide really indicates the portfolio breakdown as a, as a book value. The first, first pie chart is 2019 and the second one's 2020. As you can see, a key thing to look at is the, the green slice. In 2020, we held so much more in, in cash as we had to be ready for how the community would react on payment of their taxes with the waiving of penalties and, and late payment charges. So, and the community funded very well. We had a 91% collection rate, which was very favorable. But we had to stay liquid all the way to the end in that way. And that impacted some of our long-term holding percentages. As you see, we held longer-term percentages in 2019. So next slide, please. So we're, as part of this report, we're also recommending some policy updates, update to our investment policy. We haven't updated that policy for, I believe, three years. And we want to update it to provide better opportunity for diversification and opportunity for income. With respect to the provincial and municipal bonds, we want to, you know, revise the term limits. The existing ones are 20, 15 and 10. We want to add five years to each of those as that's more consistent with the type of products that are being offered in the market. With respect to the one investment portfolio, the one investment portfolio is large, is a, is a wonderful set of, of, of funds that municipalities can use. And in many cases, it's the only fund they can use when it comes to the corporate, investing in corporate bonds or investing in Canadian equities. And we want to provide a opportunity to increase the limit on that with respect to their money market fund because they can experience some very favorable results from time to time. They have a Canadian government bond and as well, we want to take advantage of favorable times with that. Extend our credit limit on the Canadian corporate bond and specifically the Canadian equity to 15% each. In particular, the Canadian equity is at 5% now. We want to increase that limit to 15%. But we will, if council approves that, we will maintain, try to maintain it at 10% as we, as how, to ensure that we're always in compliance with the, with the policy. The importance of taking, looking at this opportunity is that we believe it's still a safe spot to be in. It's going to be highly watched and guarded. But it, with, in an environment of extremely low interest rates, we don't expect our first interest rate increase till sometime in the middle of the second half of 2022. We're playing in the lowest interest rate environment that, that this country's seen. And we've been in a low interest rate environment prior to that, right? So we're looking for an opportunity to diversify our portfolio more and opportunity for greater returns. And we'll be monitoring and we will try to keep our portfolio equity target at 10%. Next slide. Quick look into 2021 and moving forward, the Canadian economy is, is really on track for a strong recovery. It's supported by the ongoing, you know, the ongoing assistance that the governments are providing to, to the public as they get back on their feet, be it to see wage subsidy or other subsidies. As I mentioned earlier, that we don't expect another rate increase until mid-2022. And that's been moved up sooner because before this, they said 2023, but inflation is starting to creep in. And they don't want, Bank of Canada doesn't want inflation to be too strong in the system without trying to put a control on that. So right now they're indicating that mid-2022 may be likely time for our first increase in, in interest rates. As I mentioned, we're still in a very low interest rate environment. So we don't, we expect short-term returns to be, to be lower than they are that they were in 2020. And there's not a lot you can do about that. We do have to remain liquid for certain amounts so that we can meet operating and capital cost requirements. As I mentioned, the update to the policy provides greater flexibility to diversify and for returns. Next slide. So recommendations to receive this report and also approve the recommended changes to the investment policy. Turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Dexter. And members committee, it's a very, very strong position for the city of Richmond Hill in terms of our investment portfolio. We have, as you'll note, a lot more dollars per capita in Richmond Hill that we are investing than other municipalities. And, and we're achieving a marginally higher rate of return with that. So we have, we have more money generated from, from investment, investing than, than other municipalities. So it's a, it's, it's a good, good place to be. It's, it's something that historically Richmond Hill is, has been able to achieve and something we hope to continue with the recommended changes. So councillor Chan, you willing to move the receipt in approving the new policy?
Yes, acting mayor, I'm very happy to move the two recommendation, A and B. And also, I want to echo what you have said, and also certainly lots of, thank you to the team led by everyone with our treasurer. These are, under the circumstances, remarkable returns. Now, I only have one question seeking clarification through acting mayor to the treasurer. I noticed on the very last page on the staff report, page twelve, that conclusion that is citing in particular of the two point five six percent return on income, which is clearly articulated and explained in the report. I would have thought that the higher portfolio total return of five point seven six percent in twenty twenty would have been included as well in the conclusion. Well, not only the five point seven six percent is almost two times of, more than two times, I guess, two point five six percent. So I'm just curious that was that a particular reason why only the income return of two point five six percent was included in the conclusion, but not the total portfolio return of five point seven six percent, which seems to be an even more positive and higher number through your acting mayor to the treasurer?
To Dexter.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I agree, we should have put a sentence in there that indicates the very, the total portfolio return amount. In the context of that sentence in the conclusion, we indicate that the investment income is thirteen point seven million dollars. And we can only recognize investment income based on what's actually been redeemed according to our allowable requirements to our accounting standards. And we actually saw thirteen point seven million dollars worth of income being redeemed into our bank account. And that relates to about two point five six percent. The five point seven six percent is in relation to all our holdings, not only the amount that came home through redemption, but also all our long-term holdings. And we have a fair amount of that identified in one of the, I think it's appendix B. That relates, that provides that five point seven six percent. But yes, we should have added that extra sentence because I think that's important, and you're correct. But the two point five six percent really relates to the monies that were redeemed.
Thank you. I wasn't meant to ask this question, but now that the treasurer kind of pointed me to a direction is that if I understand correctly, the portfolio total return is based on the market value. Because I hear the term is not yet quote-unquote realized. So that might help for me or maybe other people look at the numbers and figures either in staff report or in the presentation, whereas the average balance of the portfolio total return in the year twenty twenty is five hundred and thirty-seven million. But twenty nineteen was five hundred forty-seven point five million. So a layperson or somebody would say, oh, where goes the other ten billion or ten point five billion over a year? So the question through city, acting mayor to the treasurer, could it be explained because of these are not yet kind of realized number, but also depending on the market fluctuations?
Yes, that's correct. They call it mark-to-market. That's the, that's the language that's used in the industry. And then we get valuations at the end of the year, what the value of these investments that we hold are as of that point in time, and that's called mark-to-market. That's in combination with the investment income that is actually realized through redeemed investments. So that, that's the term, term of that. Is that some subject question, or did you, was there another question embedded there?
Well, well, basically, because, thank you for a response, because on the surface, when one look at five hundred thirty-seven last year compared to five forty-seven point five in twenty nineteen, one may be potential misinterpret as to, oh, we lost ten point five million dollars. But what you just explained, if I understand correctly, is no, it is not because of the market-to-market comparison. I, I think that just need a confirmation that what I just said is indeed the correct or accurate interpretation through your acting mayor to your treasurer.
Through acting mayor, that's correct. If somebody was to look at it and say, okay, the ten million dollar reduction in the average balance, I guess the explanation of that is that some investments were redeemed. Or we, when they were deemed, we didn't reinvest. We kept a very liquid position, a very liquid cash position to deal with, you know, however, the payment patterns would be of residents with respect to no penalties or interest on their taxes or the water bills. So we let the, the portfolio got reduced by a bit of amount there because we didn't re-invest some money, so we keep it in the cash position.
Right. Thank you for that, because we put more money into cash now. So after all, it's very good news story, and thank you for clarifying that. I just want to make sure people don't see us, oh, oh, what happens to that ten billion. Thank you very much, acting mayor, and thank you, the treasurer again, to your response and the team. And I'm happy to move the A and B as we commanded on the staff report.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Chan. Councillor West?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you again for this work, Mr. Dexter. And just a quick question. So I've been thinking, I, I realize with, with what we have to deal with in a municipal environment, I mean, we have many restrictions on what we can and can't do with the investment. It's not like we're private investors or we can move the money wherever we want, and there's good reason for that. I mean, we, we want to make sure that we're getting a decent rate of return, but at the same time, we don't want to take a risk that's going to cause us, you know, to have a, a huge significant drop in our investments. I mean, it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. So I get all that. And I, and on top of that, you know, given this staff report, I mean, there's some kind of self-imposed restrictions that we're putting on ourselves to further, you know, provide, you know, certainty in, in, in this environment. But I, I'm wondering, is there a movement in municipalities in general and maybe in Richmond Hill in particular where we're looking at the types of investments that we're investing in? You know, I'm talking about things that are, you know, there's been a quite a rise in the last of the while with socially responsible funds and environmentally responsible funds. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of, there's actually been some good returns on some of those funds from what I've, you know, research I've seen. But it also is something that, you know, can do some extra good. You know, the returns are good, but we're also, you know, investing in things that are actually, you know, causing some, some positive change in the world. Can you give me some, I don't need to go into this in great detail, and, you know, maybe we should talk about this further offline. But is, is there some indication that, that we, we are able to and other municipalities maybe are already moving in that direction? To some degree at least?
Dexter, are we moving to a philanthropic goal here with the investment?
Through acting, Mr. Acting Mayor. I guess municipalities pretty much have only one vehicle to invest directly into equity-type products, and that's the one fund, and they haven't identified a portfolio that, that has that social responsibility. Not that it's unsocial, or that's what they have. Sometimes our brokers, which are, you know, like wings of the bank, CIBC, RBC, offer products that are called principal protected notes, and that's really more recognized as a bond product. But if it has a tie to certain type of, certain investments, equity-type investments, it could be financial institutions, or it could be other types of industries. And that municipalities can invest in those. And if those portions of equities exceed a certain level, then the municipality gains on that. But if they don't, or they contract, municipality is protected by a certain level of, of, you know, maybe its principles protected, so they can't go below the principal amount and so forth. So if there is a moment afoot right now with respect to the type of investments that you're describing, it would be under that type of scenario, and I don't have an exact example to give you, but I think that would be the only area at this point in time.
Okay. I, you know, I mean, again, I, I think it's more than philanthropy. I mean, this is, this is really, you know, there's, there has been a movement from what I've understood in, in the investment world. And I think it's probably in somewhat of its infancy about, you know, using your investment money to put it into places that are investing in, you know, green technologies and socially responsible types of funds. So, I mean, I, I think what I'm hearing from you, and this is what I expected, and, and, you know, I can accept this answer, is that we're probably not there yet in a municipal environment. And I suspect that we'll be moving in that direction at some point in the future. But, you know, perhaps we could have this conversation next year, and maybe we'll have inched the ball forward a little bit, you know, further than we are today. So anyway, thank you for, for that, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, councillor West. And I wasn't, I wasn't being dismissive of it. I'm saying this would come about through amending our, our four goals and principles that, that we're trying to achieve. That, that's council's prerogative to, to look into that. Councillor Munch, you're next.
Good day. Thank you. I don't think we, we can change legislation, but if that's what the council wants to try and do, okay. Question I have is the following. Do you have any idea, I'm going to start. I look at, I look at the portfolio, and four million dollars was allocated to the operating budget, nine point seven million dollars of our thirteen point seven went to reserve funds. So do we have a philosophy in regards to where our surplus for investments go? And has that been standard? Is there, who makes that determination as to where those extra funds would go to? And how do you find the split between operating versus reserve funds?
Dexter?
Sure, through Mr. Mayor. The, the split between operating, we've been, over the, over the last two years, we've been trying to reduce the, the investment income amount in the operating budget to try to more in line, put it in line with the, with the short-term results. We were moving in that direction. The budget is around, I believe, like four point five million dollars, the operating budget is for, in, in, for investment income. So we, we're trying to stay close to that with the, with the amount there. We also do a detailed science on each reserve fund that we hold with respect to allocation of investment income in that way. And so be it some of the, you know, the Planning Act or the Development Charges Act does not require us to charge more than short-term returns to those reserve funds. So we do charge that, allocate that much interest there. Where some of the other reserve funds that we hold, our own, be it tax-supported capital-type reserves or some of our community enhancement and so forth, we allocate the results of the long-term portion of our portfolio. So that's, it's, it's a very organic process that way. And the results of that got us to the nine point seven million allocated to, to the reserve funds, and the remaining went to the operating.
Okay, so that, we should have a philosophical discussion as council as to how that's all get broken up to at some point during our budget process, because if we're having reserve funds, for example, in cash in the parkland, then that, those, those funds are generated from there, should be affected by that account. That's be my view, but anyway, leave that aside. On slide number eighteen, the, we have the numbers broke up. It's really interesting that the region is five times or five hundred percent at three billion versus five hundred thirty-seven million. So they're five hundred percent larger in terms of portfolio. And then I look at Markham, that's roughly the same number as Richmond Hill, even though they're double our size. Why, how can Markham have double our population, double our generation, double our revenue, actually more than double our revenue, two, two point eight of our revenue coming in? Because they got a lot more businesses and they offset that with the residential tax base. How come their, their average balance in millions in the investment portfolio, where, where's their money going? What are they doing?
Through, Mr. Acting Mayor, I really can't answer that. And it's always a risk of trying to do comparisons to, on, with respect to investments with the other municipalities, because it could be a very apples and oranges situation. Do they, do they include their cash balances in their investment activity? Not sure with respect to that. They obviously don't do a, a mark-to-market calculation of their holdings, which I think is, is a bad practice. The region is quite a, quite a benchmark of investment activity and how they go about doing the analysis there is, they, they're very well reputed that way. They do a mark-to-market there. But it's, it's tough to tell, you know, what's going on with each of these municipalities and why, because it could be very apples and oranges, the cross-section of their investments, or do they not include stuff? I mean, we don't know enough about that by just only getting the numbers, but we wanted to put something here as a reference point.
Yeah, fair enough.
Councillor Munch, early in the two thousands, Markham having purchased Richmond Hill's hydro utility affected the balances of the two cities, so that we were, you know, we, we ended up with significant
Cash reserves.
Cash reserves, yeah, and, and amounts that they, they, so they, they've got a hydro utility that they owned and some money that, that's there rather than being invested. Think that might partially explain.
Be interesting. Yeah. Okay. I, I'd love to talk about that, but not here. Thank you, Acting Mayor. Thank you. With regards to slide number nineteen, just a point of reference. We've got three colors, blue, green, and blue, and it's really hard to differentiate them. I prefer a dot, an X, and a zero, or something to that effect, although it may not look as pretty, it's easier to portfolio. But if you look at our cash, we've gone from a nine percent increase from eleven percent to twenty percent in our cash, seven percent to four percent in our short-term utilities, and eighty-two to seventy-six percent in our long-term. Well, how, well, that's a pretty big shift. Why did that happen? That's like a substantial, like a reversal.
Been explained that we kept a lot of cash on hand to, in case ninety-one percent of our residents didn't, didn't pay their taxes. Mr. Dexter, something to add?
Yes, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, that's correct. You know, with the, with the waiving of penalties and interest for late payments of taxes and water, we did, we didn't know how residents would react to payment habits. So we need to be as liquid as possible so that we can meet our, our operating cost needs to continue to provide services as well as, you know, payments of capital expenditures, ongoing projects. So doing that, we kept a higher level of cash ready at that twenty percent. So that was a big swing there from year end nineteen to year end twenty. And that impact of that is, you know, lower percentages in the long-term holdings and of course, short-term security holdings that would be up to a year duration.
So is that why our portfolio is a twenty-eight million dollar difference? Our, our portfolio book value is down twenty-eight million dollars from twenty nineteen to December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So year over year, we're, we're twenty-eight million dollars below book value, right?
Yes. Remember, we, we did, we had a deficit, right, sir? So there's an impact there, funds that didn't get reflected back to portfolio. And that, that's a point of time too, right? So at that point in time, at the end of the year, we had to make payments to the school board and the region. We had to make double payments to the school board because they deferred two payments, but didn't defer the third payment, installment of taxes. So we had double payments, we had greater cash flow payouts that had to be done. So that reflected in the four ninety versus the four sixty-one.
So with the percentage difference in the payout for cash flow, that affected our portfolio by five percent? It's a big number, eh?
I, I'm trying to.
So I got twenty, I got twenty-eight million dollar difference on four, four hundred sixty-one million, so five percent.
Yeah, and we had to, we, we, at the end of the year, we made three, really three tax installment payments. We had to pay two to the school board because they had deferred two installments to help residents and municipalities, as well as the region who deferred theirs, and so we had additional payment there as well. So we had, we had, really the difference was the additional school board payment. And, and that really shows the difference in the, in the size of the portfolio on a book value.
So wouldn't that be contributed to a COVID cost then? We, we, we gave a program there to assist in COVID. The others didn't. We had a higher cash flow. Couldn't our extra monies coming from the The others didn't. We had a higher cash flow. Couldn't our extra monies coming from the province and the feds, couldn't that be allocated for that in case they ask for the money in return? So if we, we've got some money in reserves from our COVID funding from the province, if they decide to claw that back, can we not use this as an example of where we are, are required, because we actually had a cash flow impact because of that COVID?
Great question. Go ahead, Treasure.
Um, through you, Mr. Acting, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, we could do that, uh, analysis if we were, if we were put to the gun, uh, of, of, of the federal, the provincial government indicating that we, they want to take monies back or so forth. The investment income results on the short-term side, which go to the operating results, um, are reflected in, in the reporting that we do to the, uh, the province and the federal government. So the, the lost revenues there are, are there as well. Uh, the lost opportunity investment, um, they don't provide any type of reporting form for that in anything we've seen. Um, but if got, if push came to shove, and they, from the reporting requirements, they decided that they wanted to rescind some monies, which I don't believe that would happen at all. I think it's a matter of due diligence, uh, because COVID impacts are going to go into 2022, and I believe the upper levels know that. Um, then we would push to say, okay, let's dig deeper here, and let's go that way. But I don't think it just need to do that.
There are restrictions as to where we can spend those COVID dollars, and if they come back and said, we don't meet those restrictions, they gave us extra money, as we did, and we put that reserve, if that ever comes back, please keep this in mind, because we had a net 5% loss on a COVID cash flow expenditure to school boards, who did not follow our COVID protocols, yet we were impacted by that. And I'm sure the province should be, we should be, note, we should be, some sort of communication with the province to inform them that we've, we deferred taxes, as did many other municipalities, but the other levels of government where we collect taxes on their behalf did not do that, which affected our cash flow inversely.
Understand, yep, yes.
So it's all, it's all COVID, that's 100% COVID, so that, we should, that's, that's,
And believe me, we've talked a lot at, at the treasure tables I'm sitting at, with the other municipalities, that the, uh, the, the Fed and the provincial requirement of the reporting that we're doing by the end of this month is really a matter of due diligence, uh, and not a matter of opportunity.
Okay. All right, so the, the,
One minute.
Uh, has there been any discussion about, because, uh, the, the situation's changed in the last month, as to where we're going in the province of Ontario, has there been any discussion or overtures by anybody about our COVID funding going forward?
Uh, I have not heard about any more funding coming to municipalities. Um, I've not heard of any more. I would respect operating results anyways, maybe on a, on a capital and infrastructure basis, that's a whole different, uh, ballgame, that.
The, the reason I mention that is that if we're taking investment dollars and put it into short-term cash, hurting our flow because of our operating capital of what we did with regard to taxation, then that's going to affect our investment income and what we can do or not do. And I just hope that we're having that conversation so that we're not reacting by taking things out of the capital markets, um, you know, because we're looking for cash flow. And then on the other side, the, the COVID support. So it's all interrelated, and it's, uh, just want to make sure that we're all, that there's that kind of conversation and mindset when the opportunity comes up, and when there's a dialogue, because there's been a cabinet shuffle last Friday, um, there's, there's really going to be a really exciting fall period by the province. We want to make sure that we're on top of that. So that's my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Um, I don't see any others. I do have one question, and, and help, help me to understand this, Mr. Treasure. At, um, the end of 2018, starting the 2019 budget process, we recognize that we've been overestimating the amount of investment income we're getting. And we started an exercise where we phased in over three years or four years a reduction in the amount of, of, uh, investment income projected. And now we, now we've done that, and it looks like, are we getting back up to, or as, as that, is that rebounding? Should we, should we be factoring that in, or do we, uh, we're only, we're only forecasting 4 million, and, and we're getting now over 10 million again? Uh, is that something we need to adjust or look at?
Uh, maybe I can pop up a slide, maybe help answer it with a bit of visual. Uh, the, uh, I don't have the proper number of the slide, Investment Portfolio Results slide, uh, I'd be like the, I guess, that one, I know back, uh, uh, not that one. Uh, one more back, uh, if I may, right? Uh, that one, yes. Thank you. Um. So at the start of the term, before we started reducing the interest rates, uh, we had a, uh, a, uh, income, operating income for investment income, uh, about $5.1 million. We, not that we recognize it, we had a budget line that said that. We hadn't, and we're trying to align, uh, the investment income that goes to the operating budget to the short-term investment results. Because really logically, that's what it should be, right? It's really short-term monies, our monies that we collect from our taxation, and the collecting of taxation for the upper tiers, uh, and the school board, um, where we can invest short-term and pay them. Um, that's really what you, on a pure science, you should be aligning the investment income that's in your operating budget to the, to your short-term portfolio, because you, that's the turnover of the money and the use of the monies.
I, I, I get it, and it's not, we're not looking at the total portfolio return. We've got to focus in on that short-term return, which is actually decreasing quite a bit.
Yeah.
So that exercise was proper, and we're down to 2 million is, is,
And that's not budget, that's just purely what the results were. And that was the drop, hard drop in the interest rates by the Bank of Canada. Our budget, uh, I believe is about $4.5 million that's sitting in our operating budget, uh, for 2000 and, uh, uh, actually, it's probably 4.2, sorry, in 2021, and we have one more drop that would bring it down to about 3.4 level, um, in 2022. We're going to try to do that for that operating budget. And that would bring it,
We're at a, at a more proper budgeted amount.
Yeah.
Um, once, once, that's done.
That's correct.
And, and 2022 is the last year of, of, uh, going down with that estimate.
It's the plan of three-year phase down to get to around 3.4, which we thought was a more reasonable level representative of short-term investments.
So 2021 will be the last year, 2022, we are not going to be adjusting.
2022 is the last year.
2022, okay, got it. Okay, I'm clear on that. So, okay, we've got a motion, I believe it was Counselor Chan that moved this time, uh, to accept, to, to receive this and approve, uh, the policy changes. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Here unanimously, thank you. Okay, 4.3. 2020 Development Charges, Mr. Dexter, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Acting Mayor. This is our last year-end report. It's a legislative required report where we report on the use and resources of development charges, cash in the parkland in section 37, uh, Community Benefits Funds, next slide. Uh, as I mentioned, it's a legislative, uh, report, and I'm just focused on the development charges first. Uh, Bill 73 indicates that we need to report on the uses and reserve balances and the sources of funds. We collected about $11.4 million in DC revenues in 2020, and funded about $7.1 million in capital. That's both low activity on, on both scenarios, considering the restrictions and how the year went with the, the pandemic. Um, one, uh, we have, uh, we've changed the way we reporting, uh, of, of the, of the balances and the uses, uh, because now we, with our new ERP system, we can actually do it on a more precise basis, as it called, as, as a fund-as-you-go basis, in which case we can recognize how much money of a capital, uh, budget that's funded by DCs or cash in lieu, uh, that's been spent, and what's unspent at any particular time, and then we can allocate the unspent to the reserve balances. And they show higher balances than, than we would have shown last year. Um, we, we restated 2019, uh, at the balances you see there, 103 and 100. Nothing's changed, it's that now we have a more precise science to do it with our better technology.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Treasure, I'm just going to stop you for a second.
Sure.
We have, we have four committee members visible. Uh, I guess if we were in chambers, uh, you know, having only four of us, we, we, we make, I don't, I don't know how the clerk, uh, deemed this, but I think technically we might have lost quorum. I, I just don't want to.
Uh, so, through you, Acting Mayor, um, I believe Counselor Russell was there. I did see movement, but, uh, there,
Okay, there we go. Go ahead, Mr. Dexter.
Uh, so again, next slide, please. So this slide is a good indication, uh, comparing, uh, for the last five years, uh, the, uh, spend, uh, in the dark green of development charge monies compared to the collections. Um, and you can see, uh, that 2020 was, uh, quite a bit lower on both accounts uh, than previous years, and that's because of the restrictions of the pandemic and so forth. Uh, change, next slide, please. Uh, this one gives us a, uh, a quarter-by-quarter comparison over the last, uh, uh, two years and a bit. Now we have quarter one there, and it indicates, uh, the trend of development charge monies that have been collected, um, by quarter, and you can see that, uh, on the most part, they've been lower, uh, than, um, than, uh, than the mean of, uh, that, that's the red line, average collection, right? Uh, 2020 pretty much can be explained on the most part, uh, because of the, uh, the pandemic, but we were also experiencing lower, uh, DC revenue income during 2019, this latter half of 2019. Uh, next slide, please. We received a request, uh, to provide, uh, a longer historical comparison of growth data, um, with respect to the DCs that were collected, uh, actually collected compared to what was forecasted, and the forecast would have been based on the official plans of the day. Um, so we got, we were able to go back and have information from 2005, and on, this is all provided on page six of your staff report. And what we see is that, yes, overall, the, you know, it's lots of ebbs and flows, ups and downs, um, but, uh, on, on an overall sense, um, on average, uh, then, and then really the, what, a strong indication in this graph here is the dark green is the forecasted collections through the official plans and, and growth forecast compared to the light green line that goes across, which is the actual collections. So we, over that period, time period of some 16 years, uh, we collected $281 million worth of, uh, development, uh, we forecasted we would collect $281 million with the uh, DC revenues. We only collected about 212 million. It's about 75% of the forecast, um, which is consistent to some of the, uh, discussions that have been happening, uh, through the DCs, through the DC process, that, uh, growth has really been 25% lower than, uh, what's been forecasted. I mean, you got, and you also understand here that, uh, some of the impacts of that are, we went, uh, we've gone through two recessions here on this, this whole period, the 2007, 2008 period, the significant recession we had then, and of course, the quick recession that we had in 2020 because of the pandemic. Um, there were, in the region, the region also has experienced the same type of, uh, pattern, uh, and results on, on growth numbers. Next slide, please. Uh, second part of the slide is, uh, is looking at the cash in the parkland funds. Again, it's required, uh, kind of under the Planning Act and the legislation of Bill 73, we collected in 2020, 2.6 million, funded about $3.4 million in capital expenditures and balance of almost $44 million in the reserve, very similar to what it was on 2019. Next slide. And a very similar type of pattern you see here, uh, with 2020 being a very low year because of restrictions, um, as the DCs. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this report is for receipt and, uh, and indication that we need to post it on our website according to the legislative requirements. Can I turn it back to you, Mr. Acting Mayor?
Okay. Okay, thank you, uh, members of committee. Someone willing to move this? Uh, Counselor Munch, go ahead.
Didn't want to come off, I'm sorry about that. Um, so I, I've got a pretty different, I sent you the chart that I put together since the last 20 years, and of where our growth is, where isn't growth, and our forecast versus actual collections and actual approvals. As you pointed out, set, we are 75% or less of our forecast, and you also mentioned that our DCs that we just went through were impacted by that. So if we are 25% below our budget for the last 16 years, not just one year, not two, not two recessions, close to 20 years, we are 25% total under our requirements. How can we fund firefighting services? How can we fund capital budgeting? How can we fund parks when we are 25% below, and we're increasing charges, uh, development charges throughout, and we have the second least housing affordability, and all where affordability was supposed to be tomorrow, but going forward. I'm wondering where, and we had this collection discussion, you know, privately in another area, but, uh, and I'm going to say to you, my chart doesn't look anything like yours, you know, how you flatlined it, and you can do the budgets, but it is very troublesome to me when I see a declining trend. Uh, we hear people talking that we're a growing community, when we both have just said, we are not growing. We're at 25% below our forecast. If you tell the private sector that for the last 20 years, you're 25% on average every year below your forecast, and you keep increasing costs, people are going to kind of wonder, what, what are you doing? And when is council, or when is financing, and when is our forecast versus actual going to come into a forum whereby we're saying, we need to realize we're at the mature end of our life cycle declining, and we're going to have higher costs for different areas, and these DC revenues versus forecast is incredibly alarming uh, to me, because when I look at the chart of approvals that was given to us, in 2016, we were over budget, but, and in 2005, we were over budget, to give you a number, 2,900 approvals, 2,900 approvals of homes 20 years ago. Uh, 2020 was 920. So where are these revenues coming from? Is this be, I see an increase in, are, are we, are we seeing a, uh, where is this jump coming from in 2019 and 2020? I see the, the forecast, if you look at 2020 chart, and you look at 2019 chart, 2018 chart, look at 2017, half, almost half of what our forecasts are. Did our capital budgeting decrease by 50% in those areas that aren't growing in Richmond, those wards that aren't growing? Shouldn't we be cutting those financing to those capital projects if we're not believing that an area is growing? Why should another area like Oak Ridge is be funding areas, frankly, like Ward Two? Uh, it's very alarming to me when I see that, and I see this, and, and are we, how is this all coming together? Uh, how is our, this is really alarming to me.
Mr. Treasure.
Uh, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Acting Mayor, um, so we've had limited capital, uh, programs over the last, uh, two years prior to this one, um, so, and, um, realizing that we need to get a, a firm, uh, handle on our, our capital, uh, at capital assets, and we went through a number of Capital Sustainability, uh, Committee meetings, um, and which identified, uh, uh, trends and details of all asset areas, and a number of recommendations came from that. Um, also, we, we've, we, you know, recently just approved our, uh, the core assets plus of our asset management plant, and, um, updating our DCs and so forth, that we actually, this update was just purely legislative. The next update is quite a bit more significant. Will reflect, uh, growth in, uh, from the official plan updated growth forecast, and of course, the required infrastructure to service that, uh, through the transportation master plan. And maybe more of that exercise, um, as we go through that, that, that type of discussion that you're indicating there, uh, will play out more prevalent, prevalently, because it'll result in what we go forward with, um, uh, on a growth plan, and how we need to fund that through development charges, and play a whole lot more through that process. Let me answer, answer your question there. We'll also, every year, uh, going forward, we need to have discussions on financial sustainability, which is really their existing assets, and we've had, uh, the first sustainability exercise we went through, as I mentioned, and we drive, developed and approved our first, uh, sustain, financial sustainability strategy last October. Um, lot more information to be had, and we'll have that discussion probably in 2022, um, uh, or if not then, very early in '23, on updating that sustainability strategy, as we know more about our assets from the update of official plan, the transportation master plan, um, and so forth and so on. So we're gaining more knowledge, uh, from these plans, to have really more, uh, uh, more knowledgeable discussions on the finances.
So I, I like the idea of putting plans in place. I think it's great that we're studying things. So if we say that our 2010 official plan, our parks plan, our X, and we're expecting revenue of Y, and we're going to, but we're actually not meeting our revenues of Y, we're not growing that, but we keep these plans in place, when is the evaluation of the success of those plans, or the failure of these plans that we're putting in place? Because we have plans in place saying that we're growing, and again, if you look up until 2010, where we were growing at 3% a year, and now we're growing at 1% a year. We're growing at 1%, 1.02% a year. We were growing at 3.18 until 2010. So the last 10 years, we have grown three times less. Yet we're pretending, at least some people are, that we're growing, we're actually a third of our budget, we're 25% below our annual rate of return. We, and we need to start We and we need to start having these conversations. You just pointed out that we're having these capital reserves and these sustainability. How are we going to be a sustainable community for future generations? We have poor housing affordability, low growth, and higher costs. And if we don't, and it's really not fair to you, Mr. Dexter, that we're putting you on the revenue side and on the planning side, we're not meeting there. And what we these kinds of these kinds of rates that we see on this chart. I mean, it's staggering that we have, look at the growth of our expenditures of seven million where it was, you know, three times that two years ago. And that's that's huge because people want clean water, and they want to make sure the bridges are gonna be fine. They want to make sure that our roads are getting getting done. And this chart is telling us that we're going in the opposite direction. It's not about growth and how we're gonna fund more. It's actually how can we sustain hopefully what we have now. And you're putting on the gun, and then we hear things about putting on debt. It's not fair to put you under the gun when other departments and other areas like fire, not we we want better fire services, but we can't fund it. Uh I I don't want that. I don't want to see a mass situation. So I I'm hoping that through these discussions and these reports, that members of council and the public are seeing that when you hear what people are saying, oh, my God, we have to stop the growth, we're having overdevelopment, when in fact, we're twenty-five percent below our forecast for twenty years. I haven't been in council for twenty years, twenty-five percent. So I I say it to everybody here, uh when I hear members of council say things and I hear what's going on, what is reality? What they're saying is completely opposite.
That's that's time, that's time, counselor, you wrapping up there?
Yeah, okay, so only like that. I'll wait to hear what others have to say. If I have to a second round, I will, because I got some data, but I'll right now, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I don't don't see any others wanted to speak, but I think this is a very good first step in terms of transparency. I think um the treasurer's done a good job by identifying, you know, and bringing it forward. I mean, we're receiving uh a statement uh on uh, you know, for information purposes, and you have correctly noted, Counselor Munch, that uh of our our we we have a declining amount of development charges that we're in receipt of and perhaps on the brink of a dangerously growing trend. Now, um we are making efforts to to coordinate DC actual revenues with a sustainability project, and we are embarking on an official plan update that we can't go into with our eyes closed. We have to be very cognizant of um both growth targets and and what we reasonably expect to achieve. And, you know, this is this is a budgeting exercises. That's what you do. You you go forward with best estimates. And I think um oh, as you rightly pointed out, Counselor Munch, we have to have our eyes wide open as we're forecasting um and and make sure um revenues are are meeting what what we're projecting, hoping to build. But you you we've also got to remember that we have, we have uh reevaluated the the need for infrastructure uh and very costly capital expenditures that have been also placed on hold. You know, it's still that there 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 was some ambitious projects that went along with the forecasting for these ambitious numbers that have been uh scaled back. So and we gotta we gotta continue to to do that. So um thank, thank you for um noting that and pointing it out, I think. And and thank you, Mr. Treasurer, for the for the for the transparent uh snapshot.
I just for thirty seconds.
So I I didn't didn't hear you move to uh receive this. You you want, yeah, you you are willing to. Very good. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Munch, is moving your seat. And the recommendations in four point three items A and B. So I I see no more discussion, all all in favor, or did you want to go on a second round, counsel?
Yeah, just real quick for thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay, I'll hold you to it.
So, yeah, you bet. Uh first of all, Mr. Dex, I think you're doing a really great job. Uh we've had some good conversations uh offline. And I'll say to you, I just feel that you're being put out there, and I don't think it's fair that we put you out there the way you do. I'm gonna say to you, this, when I see we're sixty-nine million dollars short of our monies, and when I hear about parkland and I see about our roads and our wires and sewer, sixty-nine million dollars short of today in cash that we have not received for these extra services. Um when our operating brothers one eighty-two, when our capital budget is thirty, forty million, think about it, three, four years of non-projects because we have not, as a municipality, met our forecast for twenty years. Twenty-five percent below. If you ask anybody in the market, will you get a bonus if you get a twenty-five percent reduction in your objectives for the last twenty years or eighteen years? Not a lot of people will say you should be getting a bonus because you're reading seventy-five percent of your forecast that you put forward. So I I I really think that you're doing a great job, and I think for you to put all the things you're doing is amazing that you could do this for the last eighteen years. So I thank you for that, and I thank you for being so transparent.
I'd like to pass that on to the finance staff. They they work really hard.
Very good, very good. Okay, and um yeah, uh it counts so much. The other thing you did point out, I think we really uh all of us have to have to uh be careful with our messaging, uh what we we've really had a, you know, a bit of a standstill in terms of growth in Richmond Hill. And um the the perception out there that we're growing too fast or, you know, at an unmanageable rate is is the opposite of of what's actually happening in Richmond Hill, at least in the last two years. We we have uh slowed down, you know, it's just funny uh talking of a former mayor who had who served a six-year term, said that uh he grew grew the city in six years from thirty thousand to ninety thousand. That represents tripling the population in six years. And in two years, our growth is a couple of percent. It's, you know, unprecedentedly slow for for what was formerly Canada's fastest-growing municipality. So with that, uh we've got a motion to receive on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed? None? Okay, again, that's the third item today that has carried unanimously. Number four point four, uh we have a presentation from Gigi Lee uh it's a it's a staff regard report regarding our two thousand and twenty-one operating forecast for Q two. Ms. Lee? Go ahead. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Acting Mayor and members of council. I'll be presenting two items on the agenda today. The first one is item four point four, the operating forecast for Q two. In January, staff submitted a two thousand and twenty-one operating budget under an unprecedented level of uncertainty, given the continuing impact of the pandemic. Staff provided a supplementary COVID-nineteen budget scenario, which outlined a more realistic scenario given the ongoing financial impact to the city and anticipated some level of recovery early in the year and opening of city facilities under social distancing protocols. This scenario, however, did not materialize as the city started the year with a provincial mandated stay-at-home order. At the April twenty-seventh Budget Committee of the whole, staff provided Q one update and a financial projection for two thousand and twenty-one based on the information that was known at the time. And as you may recall, there were growing COVID-nineteen case counts in March and a third wave stay-at-home order that took place. Significant positive development has been made through vaccination efforts, and I'm here to present to you a Q two projection. Next slide, please. The province announced a three-step plan in reopening contingent on the percentage of adults receiving their COVID vaccination. We entered step one on June eleventh. Step one and step two are still restrictive to mostly outdoor activities. Step three extends to indoor settings. The three-step plan will continue to impact city operations into the second half of two thousand and twenty-one. The Q two operating forecast accounts of information that are known at this time. Staff are projecting a net impact of five point eight million dollars compared to the four point six million dollar presented at budget. And this is all before the safe restart agreement and provincial COVID-nineteen recovery funding. Next slide, please. Focusing on recreation, the Q one forecast anticipated early June openings. However, in this Q two update, the closures are extended to the end of June. For forecasting purposes, staff have assumed the second half of the year to be a similar experience as two thousand and twenty with the city's gradual reopening plan. For this report, revenue losses have increased due to extended closures. However, they're offset by the additional savings and programming, as well as casual state uh casual staffing that correspond to those programs. We also saw additional savings in full-time salaries through vacancies, redeployments, and reimbursement for staffing at the unionization clinic. At this time, staff are projecting a net favorable impact in recreation of seven hundred thousand dollars compared to the unfavorable impact of hundred and sixty-eight thousand previously reported. Next slide, please. This slide shows the financial impact for recreation in a tabular format compared to Q one and Q two. Next slide, please. Other major changes staff have identified include additional impact in parking fine revenue of one hundred and twenty thousand to a total of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. The amps provided reductions to parking fines in response to financial hardship experienced by residents and businesses. York region, school closures have continued during the stay-at-home order, which also resulted in fewer school zone parking infractions. The exa- the extended provincial stay-at-home order delayed issuance of outdoor permits in May. Sportsfield revenues and picnic outdoor space rental revenues have been negatively impacted. The section is also anticipating a need to reinstate the business-as-usual budget for casual staffing to ensure that we're maintaining the service and accommodate incoming redeployed staff. In order to mitigate these losses, staff are recommending to leave the Richmond Green Sports Dome inflated to realize contract services savings. That's approximately one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This saving is anticipated to be offset by additional maintenance and utilities costs during the summer months. Overall, staff are anticipating a net unfavorable impact of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Further decline in investment income is anticipated, and an favorable change of four hundred and seventy-five thousand compared to the COVID-nineteen budget scenario are approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than reported in Q one because of the prolonged low interest rate environment. Next slide, please. This table shows the comparison of the COVID-related impact between the initial budget of four point six million dollars, which is approximately two-thirds down the page on on this slide, um compared to the five point one million dollar reported in Q one to the five point eight million dollar reported for Q two. Overall, staff are anticipating an unfavorable change, the budget scenario of almost one point two million dollars. However, the good news is that the impact would be mitigated by the funding from the safe restart agreement, along with the additional provincial COVID-nineteen recovery funding, with approximately four point one million dollars remaining to be carried into two thousand and twenty-two to address any COVID-nineteen financial pressures. The major areas of impact noted can change as the city progresses throughout the year and gradually reopen. Staff will provide a subsequent update in September to council to reconfirm these assumptions and also to keep council apprised of the most recent uh of of the most current operating projections. Next slide, please. The recommendation for this report is for the committee to receive the report for information purposes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. Uh and and to you and your team and all all this work that that's gone on uh in in uh, you know, tough times when when things are changing, uh almost daily. So thank you very much for this, uh members of council, commi- committee. Someone willing to move this, receive this report or have questions of Miss Lee? Okay, Vice Jay Barrows? Gonna move the the receipt, okay? Any other discussion? Uh Counselor Munch?
Good, thanks. Uh better looking um than the previous speaker, uh Miss Lee. Okay, so the um question I have is when you when you're going through your recommendations and the other major changes with the dome and everything else, I think it's really great that you guys are are looking at way of of reducing costs. Question I ask is earlier on, we were talking about user fees and how we haven't met our user fees, and that brought in uh negative area. So I don't know, what is the correlation of user fees relative to these capital costs? So if we bring the dome down, we actually get, will we get more user fees? Will it offset the costs? That does the user fees handle the cost, the additional cost increase, or what is the percentage difference? Because although we're making a savings, is that gonna affect other our revenue stream? And is that gonna affect the, you know, the availability of health because people need to be in open areas? So that's, does it is, can you help me out on any of this? So, for example, we say we want to cut the dome. I mean, does that can affect our revenues in any way, shape, or form? And we say we want to delay outdoor permits. You know, how is this affecting our revenue and how is that gonna affect our quality of life? And if we were to go forwards, you know, we say there's a three hundred thousand dollar unfavorable impact. Is that taking all those factors into account?
I think some of them might be in in four point five explained, but go ahead, Miss Lee.
Yeah, you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Um Counselor Munch, I think you were referring to the delay in the issuance or the delay in the issuance of outdoor permits in May, right? So that was under the provincial stay-at-home order, so that definitely did impact our revenues. But that was also not something that we had control of. So it was because of the stay-at-home order that we we had to delay the issuance of the outdoor permit. So again, that did negatively impact our revenues um with respect to the sports dome, um because there is a cost to the city um to take the dome, the sports dome down or or keep it inflated. So staff, as at this point, um are recommending to leave the 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 sports dome inflated so that we can realize the contract savings of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Not sure if that answered your question.
Well, will the will the people use the utilization of that facility still gonna be maintained if the dome is up or down? Does that impact us in any way? Do we know? Acting Commissioner Jocelyn.
Uh through, well, still could Commissioner of Community Services through Acting Mayor. Uh perhaps I can help out there, counselor. Um we are recommending that the dome remain inflated for two thousand and twenty-one. We're utilizing the cost savings to assist us in the redeployment of uh all the recreation staff into the parks operations budget uh for the summer uh this year. Uh when we are going to issue permits for the use of that inflated sports dome this summer, uh we will be implementing a summer rates for that. We've been meeting with the soccer organizations that make use of that uh in terms of how they can use that dome during the summer months. Uh so we're still anticipating uh permits and use of the dome, even though it's up and uh without air conditioning. So we are redeploying them as best as possible onto other fields. We're still restricted on the outdoor sports fields uh to practice and training only. Uh and we're still restricted by the numbers that they can have on the fields. So when we move to stage three, that's when we're able to issue permits for the indoor dome, and the province has not released any regulations related to step three yet at all. So we have no idea what those numbers are going to look like indoors or outdoors until we receive that direction. I hope that helps clarify a few things.
Yeah, I I on that same path. This is great. Thank you. Good seeing you. The um so the question here is, is are the so- are the soccer and those indoor leagues, are they planning or is there discussion of actually having leagues going forward in July, August, September, should things happen? Or are they saying no? Where are we at with that?
Uh through you, uh Acting Mayor, uh staff are in uh communication with our outdoor leagues, uh specifically in uh baseball and soccer and tennis and those of those leagues that exist. Uh they're following the provincial regulation, but they are making plans should they be able to proceed with gains. Um but right now, in step one and step two, they're restricted uh in how they can use it. It's training, practice, purposes only. Um and again, it's limited by the numbers per the regulation. So as an example, counselor, um when we receive um direction from the government to move to step one or to move to step two, we never seem to get the regulations that go along with that until the following week or so. Uh so we're always in a in a waiting mode to see how we can release it. But we are definitely working with those sport organizations uh to make sure they have the planning in place that they need to move forward.
If you run into a capacity issue, there's still some goodwill there. There are people in the Italian community that are still looking for that bocce that still comes to my area on a weekly basis. And if we do have a capacity problem and we do have those, we're keeping up the dome, we have operating costs, there might be a way for us to actually build a community goodwill because people are looking to have a a spirited beginning. It's been a tough ride for some, certainly the last year. And I I raise that concern because of our, not just simply a cost revenue stream, but actually a whole fabric of a spirited community and how we can work with some of these people who are at risk and where they can go forward. If we could work collaboratively on the capacity because it's a fluid situation, we really hate to see a time lapse loss when we have a capacity for a need. We really hate to see a time lapse loss when we have a capacity for a need. And I know myself and certainly at least two other members of council are really on top of that and we get asked about it regularly. So I know Acting Mayor is on top of that, but I hear about it as well. And I just FYI, thank you. It's good to see you, Ms. Lee. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. I don't see any other comments. I will say, City Manager, your backdrop does look very authentic that you are actually in the office. Okay, so the receipt, the motions on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed? Five consecutive and unanimous votes. We move to number six, oh, sorry, four consecutive, number five, tariff fees update. And again, presentation by Ms. Lee. Go ahead, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The last presentation is Agenda Item 4.5, the Tariff of Fees Update. Typically, it is an annual process taking place in the fall in light of the direction to present a draft budget earlier and before the new year. The tariff fees update has been brought forward to a June meeting for committee consideration in order to fully inform the upcoming operating budget. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, the tariff fees is an annual review where fees are updated in coordination with the operating budget process. It incorporates new fees and contemplates varying levels of existing fee increases. The revenue impacts are calculated in consideration of budget direction and efforts are made to balance the fee increases with the overall economic climate. Next slide, please. Fees are reviewed and updated annually to ensure these principles are met. I do want to mention that this is the second year where the consideration of the financial hardship of COVID-19 has had on individuals and businesses is a factor of the review. Next slide, please. The fees are grouped into one of the four categories, being legislative, regulatory, cost recovery, and community fees. Next slide, please. The city uses the RBC Economics Provincial Outlook as its guideline for setting fees. The outlook has a 2021 CPI projection of 1.9% for Ontario. The internal direction provided to staff when undertaking the tariff of fees update is that where if possible, fees should be increased by at least CPI, except for recreation, where charges to users for city programs will need to be balanced with COVID-19 related restrictions, participation levels, and program demand. This update includes almost 1,400 total fees, 36 of which are new fees, 869 fees that are increased by CPI or less, 90 fees that are increased by more than CPI, and 384 fees that remain unchanged. Staff anticipate they will bring in an additional 395,000 dollars in revenues in 2022. Next slide, please. This table shows a summary of the fee changes in the four fee categories. Next slide. Out of almost 1,400 fees, over 70% relates to recreation and culture. This table highlights the fee changes in the varying fee subcategories. As you can see, a large majority of the fees are amended by CPI or less or unchanged. The fee increases focus on fees below the benchmarking exercise with our neighboring municipalities. Next slide, please. Highlighting the fees that are unchanged within Recreation and Culture, these are facility rental permits, drop-in programs in the general program area, inheritor center services, and the DDO programs. Where there are increases above CPI, these are in the aquatic leadership programs, semi-private and private lessons and skating programs. The fee charge for the capital improvement fund for tickets to the theater has increased along with the ticket printing to recover from costs that are related to replacement of the box office software. Next slide, please. All sports fields and sport field rates have been reclassified in accordance with the parks operations levels of service study, and they are similar to our comparative municipalities. Next slide, please. The next two slides highlight the new fees introduced as part of the tariff of fees update. The details of each of the fees are described in the staff report. Next slide, please. And also, next slide. As we know, the tariff of fees is an annual process. However, staff have identified a couple situations where amending the fees mid-year would be beneficial to the city. For example, a number of municipal services listed in the tariff of fees are contracted services administered by city staff where fees are structured on a cost recovery plus administration basis. These contracts are updated every several years and they don't always coincide with the timing of the annual tariff of fees. As you've noticed, as part of this report, Public Works Operations is requesting a bylaw amendment to amend 26 fees in 2021 to reflect updated pricing obtained through competitive bids. If this was a normal year, the fees would not be amended until September or October when we do the actual tariff of fees bylaw. Another situation is where subsequent nominal increases to recreation and culture fees may be required to account for operating cost increases to adjust the COVID-19 pandemic guidelines. This is similar to the recommendation approved as part of last year's report. Given these situations, staff are recommending delegated authority to the treasurer to have the ability to amend the tariff of fees mid-year if necessary to ensure cost recovery. Staff will report back to council on any amendments to tariff fees bylaw at the next annual update. Next slide, please. With the increased needs for physical distancing due to the pandemic, the city is providing more online payment options to the community. The city increased credit card transaction also called convenience fees, which are payable to the service providers. Actual fees, actual transaction fees average about 2.78% based on the last six months of data that we have. In order to recover fees, staff recommend to charge convenience fees based on actual incurred. Next slide, please. The recommendations for the report are listed on this slide. The first one being the revision of 2021 fees for public work set out in draft bylaw number 6721, that the proposed fee set out in draft bylaw 6821 be adopted, that council delegate authority to the treasurer to amend the fee and then act a new bylaw to amend bylaw 6821 for the two situations. First one being fees related to contracted municipal services to reflect updated pricing. And then the second one being is any subsequent nominal increases to recreation and culture fees to account for operational cost increases. Last recommendation of this report is that the proposed fees be subject to an additional convenience fee in line with the charges incurred for online payments where applicable. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. Okay, members of committee, someone willing to move the staff recommendations in item 4.5? Anyone? Anyone have questions of Ms. Lee? Counselor Munch?
Good day.
Want to move the motion for us?
I don't really want to move the motion as yet. So I want to hold off. I know this is a tough topic. But I don't want to move it, to be honest, really at this stage.
Okay. Go ahead then, ask questions.
Great, great.
We're going to move the staff recommendations?
I'll, I'll move the staff recommendations with a little change of wording. When, when the wording, and I don't have the motion in front of me, but it speaks to providing a delegated authority for recuperation of costs. I think that we should maybe put an upper limit of 5% in that motion. And then anything beyond that needs to come back to council. I think that demonstrates good governance. It shows that we're not just passing the buck to someone else. That if there do need to be cost increases, we can have a healthy debate about it and we can make a decision of where we want it to lie. So if, if that can be altered there, I'd be willing to, well, I will move that motion.
Okay, well, I do agree with what you're saying and I want there to be council oversight, but 5% is, we're talking about unprecedented times where swings now up to 100% of our capacity may, may change. Things may close. This is, this is to give staff flexibility to accommodate provincial regulation changes. Maybe maybe Acting City Manager Jocelyn, you want to speak to this request for the delegation, delegated authority and what, what causes that?
Certainly. The reason that we've put this in here, and we did put it in the 2021 fee bylaw as well, is because of the provincial restrictions and the pandemic, there may be a very different look to recreation programs and services in the future. As an example, we're participating in a reimagining recreation national initiative to say, what will that look like? So for example, if we have a class of Program Y that is, has a 20-person minimum and we base our user fees on that and the province comes back and says we can't have classes any greater than 10, then we need to do some reorganizing in that. I will go on to say that if I were to consider increasing fees beyond 5%, to be honest with you, I would likely look at not implementing that program or service until I'm able to safely do so within its, you know, regular format. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the 5% and coming back to council if I need to go beyond that based on what comes forward in the, in the province.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you. Acting City Manager Jocelyn clarifies that. So we have, we have a motion on the floor then. We don't need a seconder. It's moved. Counselor Barrows has said his piece. Counselor Munch, did you want to ask questions or say anything? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Munch.
Good day. Okay, so just for clarification, thank you so much to the mover and to Acting Commissioner. So, so what we're saying now is that we're going to put these fees going forward and that anything above 5%, there's going to be a discussion at councils to how we're going to go forward. Is that enough flexibility? Although you said you can do that, we're heading into summer recess. Are we, what's going to happen in August? What's going to happen in September? What's going to happen early on there? That's going to be a bit of a void, especially because we're already here at the end of June, nearing the end of June. We have one or two council meetings left. Is this, how is this going to work out?
So through you, Acting Mayor, we've already got our summer program lineup in place. So it's all based on the 2021 fee bylaw. So all the summer camp programs and the summer programs that we're offering and anything that we open up over the summer months, which I highly doubt will be anything much because we're not allowed to open indoor until step three. We're already using the existing 2021 fee bylaw to implement it. So I don't see any issues or any fee increases over these summer months. What we're doing as a recreation staff team is looking at what is our plan to reopen those indoor recreation facilities to support program and service delivery starting in step three. And we're going to take the same approach that we've been taking for the past 16 months where we'll be reintroducing those facilities and programs on a gradual, cost-effective and efficient manner. We're not going to open all 22 facilities, you know, over the, certainly over the summer. We're going to come forward with a plan with how we do that. When I did the presentation to council last week, I did indicate in step three, the priority order for some of our facility openings in that presentation, be it arenas, pools, and gymnasiums. So I hope that addresses any concern that Counselor Munch that you have.
Thank you. Is the, are the pool, how are we handling pools? Are we, are they, are we recycling? We keeping them empty? Are we, what are we doing with our pool programs?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the pools, when we got out of the first wave before this last initial stay-at-home order, we had filled Centennial Pool in order to open it. We were planning to open it for training and the aquatic programs that were allowed to operate under the regulation. When the government put us back in the stay-at-home order, we left the water in that tank this time. So that when we go to stage three, we have a pool facility that's ready to open. Our next pool facility, based on the presentation that you received last week, will be at the Bayview Hill Community Center. Like, our plan is to open our multipurpose facilities first, like Oak Ridge's Community Center, Bayview Hill, that sort of thing. But we're going one pool at a time based on staff coming back into recreation to deliver the service based on efficiencies, cost recovery program that we're allowed to run. You know, again, because there's no regulations being announced for step three right now, we need to have an opportunity to really have a wholesome look at how we can do that. So we've got one pool ready to go that can open as soon as we get the regulations for step three.
Thank you. Thank you. So much along the same like question I asked earlier. So you just raised a discussion about how we started to do a process and then the government, because of COVID, changed the way that we were implementing the restart and there was a cost to that. Is that being factored, at least as a supplementary in case the province? Because we've got restrictions as to how we can use the monies coming from the province that are specifically for COVID-related. And that is another example of where the COVID-related cost may be misstep. So I would encourage you to us and maybe all departments where there are situations where we started a process because of an announcement and then later changed. That opportunity cost and real hardline cost was factored in and we should be able to give that to the, to our finance team. So they're aware of it so that if the province does ask for a correlation of where we're getting that revenue and did we spend it? Because we'd hate to have a situation where we didn't account for it and then later on, we'd have to amend how we do things. I don't know what the province is going to do, but I just want to make sure we're doing that because we all serve the residents and you are doing a good job on that front. I think we should, that's my only thought. So thank you for all that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor West, and then Counselor Liu.
So through you to Acting Commissioner Jocelyn, or Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Jocelyn in this particular case. Help me to understand the change that was made to the published recommended staff recommendation about the 5% coming back to council. Under what circumstances would, would fees like that be substantially changed? I, I'm not even sure what the scenario is. I think I have some I can imagine, but I don't really know. So help me to understand that.
So through you, Acting Mayor, the example I use is if we're running a program in fitness as an example, and we have an aerobic program that we've already established, we have a pricing formula for all the programs we run. If we have a program that has a maximum or a minimum number of 50 people to participate in that aerobic program, we don't run that program currently unless we hit that 50. And that's our cost recovery number. If the province comes back in step three and says you can't run any fitness programs indoors with more than 20 people per class or you can only operate at 25%, we either have to determine that we can't provide that service quite yet or we need to increase our fees to then go from 50 people paying to 25 people paying. So that's the balance that we're constantly striving for in, in recreation. I would say, just based on my years of experience in recreation, that if there's anything that's going to go beyond a nominal increase, we're likely not going to run it until we're in our post-COVID situation and we can increase those numbers.
So in other words, in a situation like that, you wouldn't likely come to council, you just wouldn't run the program?
I likely would not. I just wouldn't run it. But if I have to come back because it's a 6% or what have you, then I would definitely make those recommendations to council because it would be nominal. Like in some of our programs, if you take our seniors programs, for example, 5% or 6% might only mean a dollar 50. So, you know, I would certainly come back in those cases because I would recommend that it makes sense for us to go up 6% or 10% because the actual dollar value is nominal to our user. The whole philosophy behind our approach in the tariff of fee bylaw in, for 2022 is to help sustain these groups to come back to our facilities. They've been shut down for 16 months right now, not operating. We're trying to make it affordable for them. Our staff are working with all these community organizations to get them back up, get them back running, continue to be as affordable as we possibly can and really kickstart recreation. And I will tell council, there is definitely, to Counselor Munch's comments, And I will tell council, there is definitely, to Councilor Munch's comments previously, there is a, there is definitely a demand for recreation. Our summer camps are, you know, we just started registration for them, and they're pretty much full at this point. So people are really interested in re-engaging. So, so it's a really, there's a lot of spokes in the wheel when it comes to trying to balance recreation from a fiscally responsible perspective with provincial regulations that limit us in how we can deliver the service.
Okay, well, you've just demonstrated the admiration I would have with your knowledge on recreation that you've gained over many, many years. And we spent a lot of time in this meeting thanking the financial staff for doing such an incredibly good job in managing us through this unbelievably unprecedented time. I just find that the change to ask staff to come back for a 5 or 6 whatever percent increase, it's going to be a buck 50 or $5 for that matter, on a recreation program. I actually, I really would be concerned that that would cause less nimbleness for the staff under these difficult times. And we all have agreed in this meeting that we trust staff very much with their judgment. I actually don't think this is good governance to ask staff to do that. I think we're in the weeds. And, you know, I, I actually, it probably doesn't matter, because as you said, I think it's not going to make any difference in the end, unless you can give me an example where this really would add a great deal of value to our process. Can that, can you give me an example where you think that this might actually be something that would add value to the process or not?
Are you asking the mover?
No, I'm asking the commissioner.
Okay.
Uh, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, the only area perhaps that there might, that council may have an interest in is if we were to come back with recommendations on the facility rental side. This is, this is, you know, primetime ice, you know, our pool rentals are, are space rentals for a lot of the community groups. Because a 5% increase to a seniors organization, for example, is $500 to $600 if they're renting a facility on a 12-month calendar. And that could potentially be controversial for members of council. So that would be probably the area where I would come back.
Wouldn't you come back anyway, though?
Yes, I would. Yes. Yeah, I definitely wouldn't do that without council being aware of that. Yeah.
Right, of course. And that's exactly what I'm getting at. So, okay, that's fine. Those are my comments. I'll go along to get along in this particular case.
Sorry, committee. Council Liu, you were next.
Thank you, Acting Mayor, and thank you staff for the report. Good job. I just have a few small questions, to be honest with you, but I just want to get a better understanding. Under Appendix C, the new fees, under Office of the Clerks, there's a new item, which is request for routine disclosure of records, building permit report per month. There's a new fees, it's $56. What is that? Through you, Acting Mayor.
If I may, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Absolutely, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Hi, Stephen. Thank you. Through the Acting Mayor, as part of my office's overall responsibilities for freedom of information and access to records, a few years ago, we implemented what's known as a routine disclosure program. This allows people to access records held by the city, which we would generally only disclose under a formal freedom of information request. But because we know the nature of the records allows them to go out without any redactions, it's more convenient for a routine disclosure, and we can process them differently. It's actually based on a recommendation of the Information and Privacy Commissioner. Council actually, as part of a policy it adopted related to access and privacy, recognized that we needed to have a routine disclosure. So as we are continually evolving, we add new types of records to this program. So people don't have to go through the formal F O I program. They file a routine disclosure request. We're able to retrieve those records in a different way and deal with them and get them to the public much quicker.
Thank you. Okay, I understand that, but this fees is particularly for building permit report, right? Okay, so there are people out there interested in getting a building permit report paying $56?
Through the Acting Mayor, yes, absolutely. So that $56, that covers a range of things, including staff time, as well as the costs of retrieving those records from off-site storage. In fact, probably our biggest volume of requests relates somehow to building records. We have had, building drawings was, is, was one of the earlier adopters. We're now getting routine requests for the reports as well. So we're now including that in the program, and we do need a fee approval to be able to add that to the program.
Thank you. All right, next question is Appendix D, under Licensing and Bylaw Surfaces. So under the property-related work, so if you're following, we have grass cutting, garbage dumping, cleanup, you know, hazard tree removal. I'm just curious, so for the, for example, it's a grass cutting. Is it the, the fees that we charge whoever residents, they don't cut their grass? Then we go in and cut it for them, and then we charge them a fee? Is this the fee that we are talking about, through you, Acting Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Director Steele is on and can answer the council's question, direct.
Hello, everyone. Except you're going to have to repeat the question, because as it readjusted, I didn't hear it.
That's fine. So under Appendix, in Appendix D, under the Licensing and Bylaw Surfaces, we have the property-related work. So under that, there are grass cutting, garbage dumping, cleanup, hazard tree removal, and safety fence installation. So I'm just asking, the grass cutting, is it, you know, those residents, they don't cut their grass? We have to go in and cut it for them, and then we charge them a fee? Is this the fee that we are talking about?
Yes, that's exactly the fees we're talking about. Yeah.
Okay, so the existing is 120-plus cost, so we are charging them $5 more. And 120-plus cost, what is the cost?
So the cost, oh, sorry, through you. The cost is the amount that we, our contractor bills us to actually do the work. So for grass cutting, we have set fees for grass cutting based on the size of the lots. So that's the cost we pass on to the property owner, and then we add our 120 or $125 administrative fee.
Great, okay, yeah, okay, I got it, okay. And the same as the garbage and dumping cleanup, is this, is the same idea, right? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so members of committee, we have a revised recommendation on the floor. Mr. Treasurer, I see you waving, the city manager is waving. I'll get you next, Council Munch, in the second round. Mr. Treasurer, you want?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Could I see the recommendations quickly? I think it's, it's not fully accurate, if I may take a look at them.
Mr. Clerk, if you can see it on the screen.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The amendment to Recommendation C, I believe, was intended to be geared towards C2 and not C1. C1 is, is our contracts that are, are works done for residents based on contracted services that Public Works has. So I think the intent of the, of that amended motion was for C2, if I may confirm with the member of council who brought it forward there.
Yeah, the mover, is that, was that your intention?
Yeah, thanks for catching that. It wasn't on the screen very long, so I'm glad you saw that. That was exactly what my intention was.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay, so with that change, I'm going to wait till it comes back on the screen. Okay, so C2 is where it was meant to be added. Is that okay with you, Mr. Treasurer? Is that, is that what you hope to change?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, that done.
The mover, the mover is good with this? Oh, okay, can I put it to a vote, Council Munch, or did you have something else you wanted to say? Go ahead, Council Munch.
So I think on concept, I can understand where you want to go with this 5%. We don't want to charge user fees. And further to the, or through Councilor Mr. Liu, bringing those areas forward, there's lots of areas in our tariff and fees that really deserve to have a more thorough and conversation. For example, if we're going to be going to multifamily units of housing, and our fire services are going to be looking at that, we're going to have excess garbage areas. I'm getting a lot more complaints with regards to neglect on, on grass and those areas. And I'm going to say to you that those neglectful parties for fees, or perceived neglectful party, or people that aren't fulfilling a duty, I believe we should be a little more stronger in growth than we should have those people that are trying to use our services to try to look forward to serve the community. So to have a blanket number across the board on so many fees, I look at firefighting services of review, for example, which I would be in favor of on where we're going, because we are having, in my view, I'm witnessing a lot more civil disobedience, and people that aren't perhaps used to a certain way of life or understand the priority. And we have a COVID situation where some people are perhaps a little bit more crabby than may have been in other years. And I think it's this tariff and fee, I would propose, I'd like to see a dialogue, not just between individual counselors and people going into, I think we need to have a wholesome discussion as to what we expect our municipality to look and feel like. We had a parking situation up in Oak Ridge where people said, hey, we want to be able to go to trails, but there's no place to park. We had some debate with council where they don't want, some people don't want to have trails expansion. I think all of this has to be a discussion where how we're handling the needs of the people that want to do activities, migration growth.
Just a minute, Council Munch, if we have a point of order, Council Bows?
I think all members of council have just been impugned by the comment that was made, that councillors don't want to expand the trail network. There was never a motion on the floor, do we want to expand trails? And no councillor ever voted against expanding trails. Please, Mr. Chair, have the councillor redact or apologize.
Actually, there was a motion, there we did, I did use a private member's motion. There were people who did vote against that motion. That was the only ask was expanding.
But Council Munch, you're, you're playing with words a little bit. You, you proposed a green belt expansion under certain terms that wasn't acceptable by council.
Yeah, it was only one ask. It was the only one ask in that motion.
Under, under, under a very, very different scenario.
You don't need to have this argument with him if he's going to be.
Okay, we're not going to go back and forth. It was, it was, it was not simply the case that, that council voted against expanding trails, okay?
We're having a discussion about, didn't say into.
Take that back. Council, council has not voted against expanding trails.
Nor did I say that. I said there are some people, I didn't say, didn't impugn any individual, didn't say, those know who they are, where they're at. Now, Mr. Barrows, if you have some sort of concern about that, that's you.
We're not going back and forth. Council Munch, my ruling is that I heard you say that this council voted against expanding trails.
No, I said, some members of council, I said, that motion passed. Let's be clear, that motion passed.
I, I am agreeing with you, point of order. This council's never discussed expanding trails, never voted against it, never in any other way. I'm asking you to, to take, take back your comment, and you can continue.
Okay, so let me pull up the motion so I can specifically say exactly what was said. So that's what you're going to ask me to do. I'm going to call the motion up. I may, that's what everybody wants to do. I'm more than happy to do that and hold people accountable. Hold on for a second.
So you said we voted against an expansion of trails?
No, I did not say that. I, again, so Clerk, I'd ask you to go back and say, I did not say that in any way, shape, or form.
That is exactly what you said. You're going to, you're going to be embarrassed when the tape is played.
Happy to say it, well.
We all heard it. Maybe you didn't realize that's what you said. We're asking you to take back your implication that council voted against an expansion of trails.
No, no, okay, so I'll say, if it was, I was understood that council did pass the.
Those are your words.
Council, hold on, the motion states.
We, we, we know what the motion was.
Obviously, no, we don't, because what was said.
Your words right now that Council Barrows took exception to, I agree with Council Barrows on his point of order. You should not have said that council voted against expanding trails.
Okay, I agree with you. Council did not.
Okay, so carry on. Please drop that, that line of argument.
Yes, so as a release.
Keep your remarks focused on this tariff of fees update, please.
Fair enough. So going back to where we're at, happy to have this conversation back and forth and go forwards on this, because I believe that people want to have leisure activities and the areas where people are not fulfilling their obligations with regards to some of the duties going back and forth, and we've.
Point of order, Mr. Acting Mayor, he, he's actually going further on what Council Barrows was saying. Council Munch, please, just move on. Stop impugning people. Just move on with the comments that are at hand.
Where's the impunity? We're talking about leisure activities and talking about that. Where's that going?
Okay, Council Munch, you must not have understood my ruling. I, I, it was inappropriate for you to infer that council voted against trails.
Okay, council did not, council, council endorsed it. There are some members of council that did not vote for it, but.
No one voted against trails. You're not listening, Council Munch. Acting Mayor DiPaolo, please either ask him to move on or cut him off.
Thank you, Council West. Thank you for your point of order.
The motion was not passed.
Council Munch, you have two choices. You can talk about the tariff fees, or we're going to mute you if you want to talk about a prior motion, because you're misleading the public on.
Is it, is it your position, Acting Mayor, that council unanimously, unanimously now? Is it your, because, because again, I said council did approve the motion. The question I'm asking now, that you're saying point of, is it your position that council unanimously approved that motion? Because that's not the record that I have. And it wasn't, it was a recorded vote.
You're making reference to a motion and you're, you're changing the words.
No, again, we moved a motion, okay? I moved a motion on April the 14th. That motion is part of the public record. It was a recorded vote. I have it in front of me as I'm reading it. I know exactly how every member voted. I did not make a mention as to which member voted where. Now you're telling me that council, if I did say, if I did, I apologize. Council as a whole did approve the motion, which included the only ask, which was the expansion of trails as relates to council. There were members of council who did not vote in favor of that. If you'd like me to tell me who those were, I gladly will, but it did not pass unanimously.
Okay, so, so there, there was a motion that you moved to expand trails.
April the 14th, 2021, there was a member's motion that I moved forwards on that day. This now goes back six.
To expand trails, that, that was the, the motion.
It was the review of agriculture in Richmond Hill.
Right, okay, so.
And in that motion, on item number four, clearly stated what the only ask of this.
Council Munch, that's not the only ask. It was a long motion. There are many, many reasons why members of council may have voted against that motion. You cannot infer that members of this council, that this council as a whole voted against the expansion of trails. We never have.
I didn't say member, again, we passed motion, council passed the motion. Council passed the motion on a majority vote, but it was not unanimous.
I'm not going to go back and forth with you, Council Munch. I can mute your microphone, or you can carry on to talk about the tariff of fees motion on the floor. If you mention trails again, you're going to be muted.
Well, they brought it up. You asked me to bring it up. I didn't, I'm just saying, this is the facts. Anyway, back to our tariffs and fees and parking, and how we're trying to make sure that we have a balance on where we're going forwards. I'm sorry, you guys want to, you know, be silly, but whatever. The, I would say that we need to have a wholesome discussion, because we have some, a time of COVID where people are, are in a funk at best, and we have a tariff and fees, I think across the board, 5%, and we're having that more integration. We need to have a more wholesome discussion with regard to tariffs and fees and the. And we're having that more integration. We need to have a more wholesome discussion with regard to tariffs and fees and 5% as a whole on principle is fine, but I really am concerned, which is why I did move the motion initially to accept the fares and fees because there are so many in there that I really think that, that we need to have a discussion as a council and as a city. And I don't see a mechanism on how we're doing that. So that's my only point. You know, leave it at that.
That's a valid point. Why do, I, I, I think that's something at a later date. Maybe we can, maybe we can do that. But this is just an update. I, I agree with the whole wholesale delegated authority. So I certainly agree with the motion as amended. Okay, any, any other discussion? I'm going to call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Again, carries unanimously. Thank you very much, members of committee and absolutely grateful to our finance staff that have guided us so well through, through this difficult time. I just need a motion to adjourn from Counselor Liu. Thank you very much. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously and we stand.